This is a hybrid meeting, meaning it is held in person. It also has a Zoom link that people could access remotely. If anyone is accessing remotely, they would use their raise hand button at appropriate time if they wanted to speak. But if they're on a cellphone, they would dial star nine. For the record, the Zoom meeting ID tonight is eight seven zero eight six four one nine six two seven. I recognize an attendance, myself, Joseph Parisi, Michael Nyman, James Gelati, Lauren Norton, Ronald Wilson. And I declare we have a quorum. Our first order of business is the approval of the chair to sign the consent agenda for two. I have the old one. It's two decisions.
Two Mayflower.
Or two Mayflower Lane and five Shimataro Court. Let's entertain a motion.
I move the approval of, for you to sign to the decisions for two Mayflower and the Chairman Tarot.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Approved. We have five hearings tonight, all new applications. The first is the application of Sean Desmond for a special permit of variance to replace a shed at 20 Briarwood Street. Remind everyone when you come up, first name and address so we can get it down and recorded, and then go ahead with your presentation. Same applies for anyone wishing to speak. Here's the representative for 21 Briarwood here. Come on right up. And you have to really talk into the mic or it doesn't go on the recording at home.
Good evening. My name is Sean Desmond, 21 Briarwood Street.
Go ahead, you can tell us about your project.
Yes. I'm replacing an old, very old and very dilapidated shed, and a much smaller shed than what I've had on there. And I was unable to put it near or on and overlapping the footprint of my shed that I am replacing because of the difference. The shed I'm replacing is eight by sixteen, and the one that I would like to replace it with is fourteen feet by twenty feet. My lot is about 120 feet wide, but I also have a freshwater quarry on the lot. And it cuts way in to the property close to the house. So where the old shed would be, or is, it would be about sixty feet wide from the edge of the quarry to my property line. Also, about forty years ago, per the Conservation Commission, there was an open trench when I bought the house for the overflow of the quarry. And I brought them up to see what I could do about that, and they had me put in a twelve inch drain pipe and then a dry well for the overflow and the spring for it to go into. So the new shed would, if I put it in the backyard, because of the, about sixty feet wide at that point, part of my yard, and then the drainage pipe and the dry well is about forty feet from the back of my house, the new shed would be almost in the middle of my yard, close to the house, about twenty feet from the house, almost in the middle of the backyard and where we entertain, have a small outdoor setting set up. Further back, the edge of the quarry cuts back out, but it's about ninety-two, let It's about ninety-two to 135 feet back behind my house where the lot widens up again and where I could put the shed in the backyard. But again, that's ninety-two to 135 feet from the house. And I was hoping to get it a little bit closer, so about the only spot left would be facing Briarwood Street in the front of the house and next to the house and next to my driveway where I parked the cars.
So it appears that your relief that you need is your front yard. Proposed only be twenty-one feet from the street on the front property.
Yes.
Your left side should, needs to be ten, I mean fifteen, you only, you want to put it within five feet, so there'd be variance for left side also. It's a little taller than an accessory building is allowed to be, so you'd have a special permit for height. And you'd also have a permit to put the shed, an accessory dwelling closer to the street than the principal building.
Yes, correct.
I think we got everything listed there. Have you talked to your neighbors?
I have. I've spoken to several of the neighbors that are directly across the street and up and down the street, a couple of houses, and I've spoken to both my abutters and the abutters' abutters, and haven't heard any objections. They said that that was all right with them. As far as I know, I don't have any opposition.
Okay. Yeah, you have a significant lot, obviously, but limited by the quarry, limited use by the court. Anyone have any questions of the applicant at this point?
And you staked out on your property the position of the new shed?
I'm sorry?
Did you stake out? Did I see?
Yes, I put a stake out.
Thank you.
And also some lines around the four stakes.
Okay. Thank you. We'll take public testimony on this one. You can have a seat. Is there anyone in the audience or online wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anyone in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none? Discussion or motion? Hold its breath.
No discussion, I can make a motion. Application of Sean Desmond for, he actually needs three variances, right? Needs a left side, a front, and a, yeah, bill, the secondary building closer to the street, and then special permit for height exception for the, for the building. I would move approval for the reasons stated by the applicant for the three variances. I think he's established a hardship there, and I don't see any issues with the special permit for the height exception. I move approval of all three variances and for the special permit.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for all the relief requested. Roll, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You've been approved. We'll get a decision out to you with instructions on what to do next.
Good luck. You don't need to do anything.
Hey. Second hearing is the application of Donna Ramsden for a special permit of variance to add an addition at Nine Orchard Way.
I'm short. Hi, my name's Donna Ramsden, the owner of Nine Orchard Way, my husband's bike. And I have brought Josh Berg with me, who's the designer, so he can ask more detailed questions if you have any. But we have a house that's a very small house, a non-conforming lot, right? I've lived there for 23 years. I love the neighborhood and the house. I'm aware of my aging, and I'd like to make a house that's I can age into. So we wanted to make it just enough, big enough that we could add single level living in it, a small bedroom on the first floor and laundry, and then be able to go up a little bit, so there's an extra bedroom upstairs for a family to visit. So Josh came up with the design that fits without, I think, adding any more nonconformity to the existing nonconformity as best we could. And that's.
So this is a special permit to alter and expand, right? That's it? Yep.
Everything appears that it's over, the new stuff is all over the existing decks and existing part of the house, right?
There's one little section that goes out into the yard, about seven feet, just under seven feet.
Talking to one on the back.
Sorry. There's one section where the new master bedroom would go out into the yard.
Right.
Small distance, but I think it's inside the variance.
Always open expand, but are we, what are we doing on the back? It's closer because, go on here. Yeah, so it'll be a straight alt and expand and nonconformity, pre-existing in the back. Okay, any questions by the members? No? You can have a seat. We'll see what the neighborhood thinks. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anyone in favor? If you're in the audience, you just come up to the mic. If you're on Zoom, you hit your raised hand button. Seeing no one, is there anyone in opposition to the application? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Again, seeing no one, discussion by the board?
It's like a thoughtful effort to improve the house and comply with the zoning regulations.
Yeah, I agree. They're making a nice, nice little home out of it and without really going crazy on the footprint, so I think that's good. Anyone else? I'm willing to entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion on the application of Donna Ramsden for a special permit and/or variance to add an addition to Nine Orchard Way.
Definitely second that, special permit to alter and expand.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. You'll hear from us, Lauren. Okay. Our next application is the application of Patrick Flaherty for a special permit of variance to construct a shed at 143 Wheeler Street.
Donna Shorten, I'm taller. Good evening, folks. I'm Patrick Flaherty. I live at 143 Wheeler Street. My application is for a three-foot setback variance for 10 by 14 garden shed. I'd like to build on the rear of my property. The shed would comply with the front-side setbacks as well as the setback from the house. And for height, it would be under 12 foot in height. My purpose for asking for the variances, the house is orientated, the lot's rather narrow on the front, so the house initially was placed in the deeper, wider part of the property. So it gave me a very modest, small backyard. And the backyard, I don't want the shed to impede on the backyard. I've got a couple of young grandkids that kick a ball around, so I'd like to be closer to the property line with the shed. I've spoken to several of my neighbors. Nobody's in opposition. I think there's a couple of support emails for it, and I appreciate your consideration.
Okay, just want to make sure everybody saw this plan. It wasn't in my packet. So do you access?
Did you stake out the position? Just trying to sort between the five site visits.
I stake the corners of the.
Of the building?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Do you go into a breezy point road?
No, the entrance to my home is on Wheeler.
Long, narrow driveway there.
It's a long, narrow driveway. The frontage is about 52 feet approximately.
Right.
And then halfway into the property widens out to 100.
Okay, yeah, that we dealt with on a different project with the DPW right-of-way. Remember that, Meredith?
Yeah, vaguely, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So you go straight in that way. Beautiful.
Straight in off Wheeler Street, correct.
Okay. Oh, any neighbor issues or questions? Talked to anybody?
No, I've spoken to my immediate abutter to the rear where the setback is. I'm asking for the setback. He's in favor. In fact, when he built his garage, he added some very tasteful arborvitaries as a, between our properties, which came out real nice.
Got a nice buffer there. Yes, I agree.
We did receive positive communications in your favor that are in the packet. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we'll have, you can have a seat. We're going to take public testimony. Are anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward or raise your hand. Seeing none, is there anyone in opposition to the project? No, we need for rebuttal? We'll be strictly voting on a rear yard variance?
I believe so.
Agreed. Okay. I'll take a motion or discussion.
I can make a motion if you want.
Go ahead.
Application of Patrick J. Flaherty for a rear yard variance, construct a shed at 143 Wheeler Street. I think it's sort of a classic shed for us, that if we force him to meet the setback, he's got the shed in the middle of his yard. All the neighbors directly impacted are in favor. I don't see why I would want to stand in opposition to that. I would move approval of the shed. I don't believe we're derogating from anything in the ordinance.
Second.
All call made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved. We'll be, have a decision out there. Lauren. Hey. Fourth hearing of the evening is the application of John Brook for a special permit of variance to construct a garage at Reed Drumback Road, Attorney Ellison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Deborah Ellison, Ellison Law Office, 63 Middle Street, Gloucester. And if I might share my screen? The applicant is John Brook, and he is here this evening. And Julie McDonald is the, from Olson Lewis Architects, is on Zoom and ready to answer any technical questions that you might have. Mr. Brook would like to construct a garage, meeting the principal building, excuse me, setbacks with a recreation exercise room and a three-quarter bath and a kitchenette that will only include a refrigerator and a sink on the second floor. This is a picture of the existing home. And the relief that is being requested is a variance under 3.2.1 footnote C, where the accessory building is closer to the street than the principal building, and a special permit under 2.3.721 for customary accessory uses of a three-quarter bath and a kitchenette. And no other relief is requested or required. This is the site plan. You can see that both buildings are quite a distance from the street. The house is approximately 145 feet from the street, and the accessory garage will be approximately 60 feet. There is a variance request of 84.6 feet. The accessory building meets all of the setback requirements of a principal building, and it is also setback approximately 20 feet more than the 40 feet that is required from the street. And the applicant is seeking to construct the garage with the recreational area and exercise room. The rec, exercise room is allowed as of right. The customary uses of a three-quarter bath and kitchenette require a special permit. There's currently a single-family home on the lot that will be undergoing renovations. Those renovations will meet all of the dimensional requirements, therefore there's no relief required under 2.4.4A1. We've submitted one letter of support from a legal abutter, and I believe there's one other abutter tonight who will be speaking in favor. We're not aware of any opposition. The property is in the RC 40 district, which requires 40,000 square feet. This property has two acres. The lot's a double the required size. The building will meet all the principal building setbacks. The front yard requirement is 40 feet. It will be 60 feet, point two. Rear yard and side yard are 30 feet, and both proposed rear and side will be met. The height of the garage will be 21.5 feet, which is allowed. It's well below the 30 feet that would be allowed because it meets the principal building setbacks, and it's almost 100 feet from the existing house. And lot coverage will be 4% where 25% is allowed. This is the floor plan of the garage base and floor plan of the rec exercise room with the three-quarter bath and the small kitchenette with just a refrigerator and a sink. And these are elevations of the garage. The variance should be granted because of the substantial hardship due to the unique characteristics of this property. Although the lot is large, it's long and narrow, and has many environmental constraints of a FEMA velocity zone, flood zone, and wetlands. The VE zone is immediately behind the house, and no new residential structures can be constructed in the floodplain under the ordinance, floodplain ordinance that was recently passed. The septic system is also located directly behind the house, and there are wetlands located on both sides of the lot. There's a well located on the left side of the house. The layout of the house also doesn't lend the garage to be attached, being attached to the house. The current location is most sensitive to the environmental conditions and most compliant with the environmental regulations. It's impossible under the current regulations for the applicant to construct the garage behind the house. The variance does not undercut the substantial intent and purpose of this ordinance, which is primarily construction of an accessory building in front, in the front yard for aesthetic reasons. The garage will be a significant difference distance from the street. It's screened by existing vegetation. It's a dead-end street, and if you did visit, it's a very rural neighborhood where houses are set very far back from the street. There are only three other houses on the street. And moreover, the garage will comply with all the principal building setback requirements. Based on those facts, I would suggest that the requested variance may be granted. With regard to the customary uses, we, I, we do meet the requirements of GZO 1.8.3, and I will briefly go through those. The social, economic, and community needs will be served. Customary for a recreational exercise space to have its own bathroom and limited kitchen facilities. It will help serve the needs of Mr. Brook and provides facilities that are accessible outside of the main house, especially where the garage will be about 100 feet away from main house. With regard to the three-quarter kitchenette and bathroom, there will be no additional traffic or safety concerns. Also, no impact to public utilities. The property is served by a private septic and a private well, and the bathroom and kitchenette will not exceed the allowed flow and usage of the septic system, and there's adequate water to meet these needs. It's also consistent with neighborhood character. It's a neighborhood comprised of residential dwellings on large lots, many of which have their own accessory structures and uses. And the quality of the natural environment will not be altered. There are no wetlands that are being disturbed, and the project will be approved by the Conservation Commission. The location was chosen to be most sensitive to environmental conditions. Lot coverage is only 4% where 25% is allowed, and therefore, open space on the lot is more than satisfactory. The potential fiscal impact will be positive, and there's no vulnerability to flooding or flood damage, taking into consideration flood level rise, because the, although the property itself is in the FEMA velocity zone, the project is entirely outside of it and over 100 feet away. Based on all of this information, I would suggest to you that a variance and special permit should be granted, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Good, I mean, usually we're, when we deal with something in the front yard, it's, it's close to the street, but this one meets all the setbacks, so the height's not even a factor. That's great. We'll take some public testimony. If there's anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application, please come forward or raise your hand. Anyone in favor? Reminder, we need your name and address first.
Hi, Kate Davis. I'm an abutter, 48 Fort Hill Avenue. I just have a question. Why does this need a special variance? Because it's too close to the street or?
Oh, we have, yeah, there's rules that you can't put sheds and garages and everything in front of the house. The idea was, you know, you had a front yard setback for a reason, for parents more and just off the street. This is such a big lot, and the house is so far back, it's, it's just, I mean, it seems like an easy thing to grant because it is so far back.
So it's far enough setback from the side lot?
Yeah, it's, it meets all the setbacks. Even if we were doing it from scratch in the beginning, without the house there, they could put this building there, because it does meet all the setbacks, yeah.
I have no problem, and I'm the director of butter, so.
Yeah, great. Nice-looking building, it will be. Anyone else in favor? Anyone in opposition to the application? Any opposition?
Could you put the relief requested back up there? Want that one? Perfect.
That's it.
Thank you very much. I can make a motion if you want. Application of John Brook, seeking a variance under 1.7.2 for accessory building closer to the street than principal building, 3.2.1 footnote C, and a special permit 2.3.721 for customary accessory uses, three-quarter bathroom, kitchenette, refrigerator, and sink only. I'm thinking for the reasons stated by the attorney, I would move approval of the variance and approval of the special permit as presented to us, including the seven factors, 1.8.3.
Second.
The maiden seconded for variance and special permit, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved, appreciate the draft. Good luck. Slow down. Okay, our next and final application is the application of Kristoff and Danuta Chilinski for a special permit of variance to demolish and rebuild a single-family home at 1 Mayflower Lane. Yep, Bob Gullah's, is I mean? Muted, Rob. Muted, Robert, can you hear us, you're muted?
That should have done it. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I guess I'm up, please, I have a shaky internet here, so let's hope it stabilizes. Hello, commissioners, for the record, my name's Robert Gullah, I live at 593 Essex Avenue, Gloucester, Mass. I'm a licensed architect, I am here representing Danuta and Kristoff Chilinski for the property of 1 Mayflower Road. I'm sure you reviewed the drawings and possibly the site, so I'll give you a brief synopsis of where we are. Danuta and Christopher's builder made a mistake thinking this was going to be a complete teardown of the building on the first floor and not a substantial renovation. And unfortunately, took the entire house down to the first floor deck. So we're here, and obviously so. Now we breached the subsections 2.45 with basically a complete demolition of the existing non-conforming structure. But I believe with the supplied revised plans I submitted prior to this meeting, we have cleaned up the majority, if not all, the non-conformities that were existing on this property or lot. And I think that's about it, I'm assuming we're looking for a special permit. It's a one-story structure, single-family?
So no, no new non-conformities, right, Rob?
Correct.
We agree in a pre-existing nonconforming?
I think so.
So 2.4.3?
Yeah, with, with 2.4.5's teardown, I believe.
Yeah, 2.4.5. So the, Rob, the original intent was the addition that was all conforming and didn't require any kind of special permit of variance, correct?
I believe so, but I don't know if Rob wants to chime in, Mr. Vacari, I believe it was, but I'm not 100% sure.
You issued you a building permit, right?
Yes.
So you were conforming.
Correct.
Tearing it down. You now were dealing with the part that was already there, so you kind of sacrificed your non-conforming. Right, so we would have to reapprove it under the 2.4.5. Okay, I think we're clear. Anything else you want to add, Rob, are we good?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward, it's unfortunate, but it happened.
Yeah, we've had a few of those lately.
I'm sure.
Okay, is there, we'll take some public testimony, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anyone in favor? Seeing none, any opposition to the application? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, discussion? By the board? Do we want to slap his hand or anything?
Say that to Rob.
Unfortunately, we've, we've seen too many of these last couple of years with builders. I mean, they'd come in and said, hey, we want to tear it down, we, and what we go, we tend to go by is, would we have approved it?
Right.
And asked for the right relief? And in this scenario, I can't see why we, I mean, I wouldn't have voted against it.
Pretty straightforward to me.
If it had been something that maybe we, there was a reason we would have not wanted it to happen, that would have been a different story, but it seems like it's something we would have approved early on, so no sense delaying any further. So if no one else has anything to add, we'll take a motion.
Go ahead. Do you do public testimony?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Pay attention. They usually forget.
I'll make a motion to approve the application by Kruzetskoff Chilinski and Danuta Chilinski, 1 Mayflower Lane, map 75 lot 10, for a special permit under 2.4.3 and 2.4.5 for the demolition and replacement of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family residence. And it seems that this structure will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure was, and.
I would second that, and I'm sure Rob knows, and somebody will make sure they know that this moves along expeditiously and according to 2.4.5.
Understood.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved. I'll, I'll write it, we'll get it out as soon as we can.
Thank you, commissioners.
Take care, Rob.
You too, everyone be well.
Any other business that anyone on the board would like to bring up for discussion? For next meeting, you all got your packet, we have three hearings, plus will be the continued hearing of the 40B. Hoping by then we'll have everything in that will be recorded and put into the record of if there's any more consultants going to be needed, or whether we'll be able to move this along. Hoping to not take too long. The, I'll have to look, I gotta look into some deadlines, just to make sure we're in compliance.
I think we talked about that last time, too, to make sure we understood what the deadlines were. That's what I meant.
Yeah. There's a point where we have to render there's always a date for a decision unless we ask them for a continuing, which it'll always do, I just don't want to miss that, but yeah, we're good. Okay, anybody, anything, Rob? Have you heard all the hearings so far on it? We're trying, we're keeping a record, so that if somebody misses, we'll be able to listen in, and then, you know, we'll have an affidavit that you, yeah, that you heard. But we, you want to catch up right away, you don't want to miss two in a row because then we lose the right to catch up. With that in mind? You what? You weren't here when we were on?
Saw the initial.
Yeah? Okay, so if you listen to the second hearing now,
Yep.
And let Natasha know that you listened to it so it's in the record, then you'll be okay. And then we'll have to do it again for the next one. Okay, nothing else? We'll, yeah, we hope so.
Be good now, be good.
And just a reminder, too, if anybody's not up to date on your conflict of interest or whatever they, you know, that every year or two, you're supposed to go online to the state every two years. If you're not, you'll get a notice from the clerk, but I always try to just usually do it like in January, so I don't forget. All right, take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?